Yes, here.
Vice Chair Milliken, did he get in yet? Treasurer Davis?
Here.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher here.
Trustee Landau?
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton here.
All right, thank you, everybody. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support.
Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Treasurer Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Looking at Tab A now, approval of the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the May 19th monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion? I'm sorry, that should be June 19th, right? Forgive me.
Two sets of minutes, I think.
Oh, do we have two? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to verbal communication. First, we hear from Ms. Julie Kissel of the WCCEA. Ms. Kissel, are you ready?
I believe I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Start my video back up. All right. Well, it's July 2020. In the month since the last board meeting, preparation for the fall semester has really picked up speed. And so in an effort to meet the student needs, more classes are being transformed into fully online courses. And in conjunction with BPI Hearns and Executive Director DeLong, the WCCEA has signed a letter of agreement giving faculty flexibility with course load while in this development stage. While the onboarding so many courses for online delivery, we also discovered some gaps or other inconsistencies in the process and record keeping that we're going to continue to work to clarify. And all of these things and more are really keeping the faculty, advisors, counselors, lab techs, librarians busy. And none of us could have understood the pressures of working and teaching during a pandemic. And with fall semester fast approaching, the pace and the needs are only increasing. Therefore, it's essential that we all continue to work together to streamline these processes and find solutions that allow us to do our best in the uncertain times. The WCCA also wants to extend our congratulations to the Office Professional Technical Association on the ratification of its contract. The faculty and staff are so appreciative of the OPT's support since moving off campus and thankful for their efforts to reinvent how that support is delivered. The WCCA is looking forward to working with Ashley Wisnewski and Tracy Johnson, new to the Student Services area. The WCCA leadership will be meeting with them, as well as other supervisors from across the campus, for a contract review session in August. We feel that it's critical that we have a shared understanding of the contract and establish an open line of communication, especially in this virtual work world. The WCCA has also been made aware of efforts to create a black faculty and staff organization on campus. The union stands ready to offer its support for this endeavor and looks forward to more information. I'm also pleased to report that the WCCA Faculty Union Care Student Emergency Fund continues to grow through one-time donations and payroll deduction. And so all are welcome to give as this is 100% available to the students. And so now, as we look to beginning our fall 2020, we will be doing so without some wonderful faculty. While the final list of retirements is not yet out, the WCCEA sends its very best to those embarking on their new adventures, Jim Egan, Phil Guyer, and others. And we will be losing decades of institutional knowledge. And it is with regret that we're not able to have a proper send-off for them. So we do look forward to celebrating with these folks at another time. The past five months really have tested us in ways that we've never could have predicted. And however, we have risen to that challenge, and while there is still so much to do, and there's so much that we don't even know that we have to do, the WCCEA will continue to support the membership and this college community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Vanessa, were there any public comments received?
Sorry, I was muted. There were public comments received, there were several. And they're going to go ahead and play those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Fleming. We have received several comments to be read aloud. They all have the overarching theme of that we should reconsider our decision to discontinue the culinary program. The first communication is from Gary Marquette, and it reads as follows. When I first heard that WCC was canceling its culinary arts program, I was shocked. After I read the official memorandum of notice, I became incredulous. The cavalier attitude of the wording in the notice is unbelievable. The most egregious line in the notice is the fact that after running a successful culinary program for almost 50 years, the school feels that culinary is a field that does not require formal training. Employees can be successful with sweat equity. The statement is a slap in the face for every professional chef, cook, baker, pastry chef, or anyone else in the culinary profession who has ever gone to school to perfect their craft. That same sweat equity logic could be used for motorcycle mechanic, auto repair, welding, or even math. Would you go to a doctor who only learns through sweat equity? Formal training also gives students a significant advantage when entering the workforce. It's pretty much a known fact that a cook with two years of schooling will be five years ahead of one without formal training when entering the workforce. Other things that are covered in school are classes in sanitation, a national certificate test, nutrition, allergy awareness, menu planning, and cost control. I guarantee those are areas that are not taught on the job or through sweat equity. Formal classes also give students an opportunity to learn proper methods of food production and how to fix mistakes. The rapid pace of most restaurants is not conducive to learning proper and safe food preparation techniques. Next time you get food from your restaurant, ask yourself, does this cook have safe food handling knowledge? Or am I going to get risk getting sick? As far as WCC statement, that would heavily promote the program. I would like to know where this is happening. As an example, the most recent issue of lunch gives a front page and two full pages promoting nursing program. Culinary gets two lines in the middle of a crowded page. It has been obvious for some time that there is no support for the program. When the culinary program was getting ready for its American Culinary Federation accreditation visit, people stepped up to volunteer to help. I was also told by my dean regarding the department that they are on their own, and I hope they fail. I'm leaving them to hang. So much for supporting their program. The option is now to send all the area students to schools that are out of districts, which will incur higher tuition and longer, if not in some case, impossible commutes. WCC mission says, "Our college strives to make positive differences in people's lives through accessibility and excellent educational programs and services. We provide caring, open-door teaching and learning environment. We provide excellent teaching, counseling, support services. We reach out to people who have limited income or other barriers to success. We enable people to progress in their academic and career pursuits, and we work in partnership with communities we serve. It is time to walk the talk and start supporting the students and start supporting the students in the culinary program and the community which the school serves by rescinding the notice of cancellation. Sincerely, Gary Marquette, Certified Executive Chef." The next statement is from Thomas Rosigno, Dean of Culinary, the Culinary Institute of Michigan Baker College. And his statement reads as follows. Washoe Community College Board of Trustees, Mr. Don Garrett gave me my start as an educator at WCC Culinary Arts in 1995. I would have never considered going into post-secondary culinary arts had it not been for him. He took a young cook, sure interestory chef, who thought he knew how to teach simply because he trained people in his full-time job. I just wanted the gig to have more money for diapers and formula as my son had just been born. I had no idea to distinguish formal teaching from training. He hired me despite that as an adjunct. For four years, he let me fly on my own, guided me when I needed, and supported me in everything I wanted to do. Taking ice cream teams out to festivals, taking students to competitions, and much more. He taught me how to teach properly in a formal setting. I was taken off guard when an industry colleague told me of Washington County College decision to deactivate their culinary arts and baking programs. I was further surprised and disappointed to hear that it was partially because of a stance from current administration, and I quote, "Culinary is a field that does not require formal training. Employees can be successful with sweat equity." This is disturbing on several levels. First off, it exposes a disconnection between administration and its programs. Secondly, it demonstrates a lack of understanding and complete tone deafness from administration on the hospitality industry, its current state and its future state, and the needs of the community, especially in COVID-19, post-COVID-19 world. It also draws into question if administration was ever even remotely interested in these programs. Did they give appropriate resources for recruitment for the culinary and baking programs, et cetera? It also begs the question of whether someone has forgotten the purpose of community colleges. The implication of this decision and statement are chilling, quite frankly, to those at other institutions who will welcome the news thinking it means well for their enrollment. I would say beware. It is never a good thing to see a program that has been existing almost 50 years go down. A program that has served the tech centers and high schools of its county with an affordable option for quality instruction and hands-on experience. When an institution of higher learning makes statements such as this, it is extremely troubling, and it should be disturbing to all chefs and chef educators. I don't recall learning about marketing and PL statements, overhead sanitation, nutrition, writing, reading, a balance sheet, menu composition, and the list goes on through sweat equity. But I certainly remember learning about all the things sitting in a formal classroom. I love taking general education courses, but I took them in pursuit of my degree, and my career has been the better for it. I worked for six years as a line cook and dishwasher and amassed quite a bit of sweat equity, but no one will hire me to run their kitchen until I went to college or my formal culinary degree. I could have never moved through the ranks of professional certification without having my formal education in culinary arts. I understand eliminating programs to reduce the portfolio of what the college offers due to lower enrollment, a dried-up job market, et cetera. However, assuming as such a statement as culinary is a field that does not require formal training, employees can be successful with sweat equity is put on the public consumption. It exposes severe lack of understanding and respect for what culinarians and pastry culinarians do as professionals and within their prospective communities. No more than ever the interesting needs are students from all of our programs. The industry needs good cooks and bakers who can encourage great students to become great sous chef, banquet chefs, and professionals who have an excellent foundation, the foundation that comes with formal education done correctly. I sincerely hope that the leadership of Washington Community College will step up to the plate and work on a better solution than deactivating for the stellar programs that for nearly half a century has served the surrounding community and placed professional in the highest stature into countless hospitality menus. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Thomas. This message was received by Nana Kubo, and it reads as follows. To the Culinary Arts and Pastry Department, before I begin my argument as to why WCC should reconsider the discontinuation of the well-known jewel program of the school, I would like to take a brief moment to speak about myself. My name is Nana Kubo, but most of the instructors and fellow students know me as Seven. I am the granddaughter of a successful Japanese chef who served under the Emperor of Japan and one of the first to receive a license to prepare and serve the poisonous puffer fish. A granddaughter or someone prestigious, you may be wondering why I'm enrolled at WCC. You may expect me to be studying at a top-notch university or culinary school. My grandfather told my mother that it doesn't matter where you learn, it is what you learn and how you apply it to the real world after graduating. Due to my father's occupation, my family and I are always on the move. I lived in various places and was blessed with the opportunity to experience each country's unique culture. And now that I am here in Michigan, for the next few years, my goal is to gain all the knowledge that is offered at WCC. I finished my semester during winter 2019. To be frank, it was a roller coaster ride. I worked two part-time jobs, take care of my siblings because both of my parents work, and commute to school by public transportation. I would arrive at school as soon as I drop off my sister at school. An inside joke between my instructors and I is that I live inside the shared culinary office. Whenever I am inside the office, you will either see me studying, consulting with the chef, or using my time with the chefs to gain knowledge. If this program is taken away, it is also taking away every good time, good thing in my life. Yes, of course, I love my family and friends, but my love for culinary arts is much more. I plead with you that the Culinary Arts and Pastry Program is not discontinued. If there is more you would like to know about me, please feel free to contact me. It would be my pleasure to speak with you all regarding my future implants. In my heart, WCC does not stand for Washington County College. It stands for Washington Culinary Community. Please reconsider taking away the jewel of WCC, but instead help it grow into a beautiful gem for the current students and the future generations. This comment is from Leopold Chen, and it reads as follows. To whom it may concern, I am a cook both at Catherine's Catering and at M Dining. I graduated from WCC Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management Program at the end of winter 2018. And without this program, I wouldn't have touched experience doing half the stuff in the class I have learned through sweat equity. I have gained invaluable network through this program, have been encouraged by many instructors in this program when work has been beating me up to a pulp, and love my time while working full-time in industry and doing school part-time on my days off. By getting rid of this program, they are denying hundreds of current and future students from learning something that they would have to spend thousands more tuition to even hear about and having a safe, nurturing, controlled environment that has been the pride of many students and faculty. People actually looked forward to coming to lunch at Garrett's where they knew they can get the most of their dollars' worth for food that is prepared behind those closed doors, rather than spending it towards middle management companies where their profit is outsourced and not invested into the communities. They're also strangling the local restaurants to local quality chefs that have been to train sanitation laws, cost controls, and even know about the importance of nutrition and allergens. Within 25% of future generation guests will develop some type of allergy to food. Lastly, in terms of student investment to what they will play back for their student debt. I have graduated from this program owing nothing monetary-wise, and returns of this career is so little that it almost granted them. Most chefs at their school will still owe student loans after graduating 10 years ago. WCC has offered that chance that I don't have to worry about the $1,000 of debt that otherwise would have acquired if I have attended Jackson College or even School Craft. So please do not let WCC disband this great program that is affordable, enriching, and one of the most prides that the school has. Leopold Chen. This comment is received by Jake Avery, and it reads as follows. Hello, my name is Jake Avery. I am attaching my statement in regards to why WCC should not get rid of the culinary program. I am asking that my statement be read during public comments and be included in the meeting recording. My statement, the culinary arts program at WCC is family to me. I started there back in 2014, graduating in 2018. The knowledge and skills I have developed wouldn't exist without my time spent in the program. The chefs were always there for their students, not just inside the classrooms, but also outside the classrooms. The passion and love for the art radiated off the instructors. They knew the information and had expertise. I used to love hearing all the different stories from my chef's past. I used to always blow my mind how much they would remember and the amount of things they have done. This program truly shaped me into the individual I have become today. I know that I would not be where I am if it wasn't spent the time I did in the program. The bonds are strong, whether it be between student and staff or chef and student. There are so many bonds made and friends of all ranges. Diversity was there, and it was loved, younger, older, all different shades of the rainbow. The program came together no matter what or who. Everyone always walked away with new friends and a buffet of memories that will stick with them for years. The post could honestly go on forever. Because I have so much to say for this program. My life was falling apart and changing in so many ways during my time at WCC. And being a part of this program where the teachers cared and I have friends, some who were much older than me, I didn't matter. They were there for me, and I was there for them. Students in the WCC culinary program now only have each other's back in our program, but also outside of the program. Times are tough right now, this we all understand fully. However, food and baked goods aren't going anywhere. There are so many chefs and bakers out there, even some that don't even know it yet. Shutting down this program could mean taking away someone's last chance, someone's new beginning. Chefs are powerful people that would... Chefs are powerful people that this world needs more so now than ever. This world has money, so money in low numbers. Shouldn't be the stopping factor of what could just be a next top chef or baker. I will forever call the culinary program at WCC family and will never change. It's a different kind of love. Jake Avery. This comment was sent by Emily Kark, and it reads as follows. Proud culinary student here. My school, Washoe Community College, is planning to discontinue the Culinary Arts and Management Program, as well as a baking and pastry program. Over the years that have, I've been part of both programs. I've learned so much, thanks to the dedicated and incredibly talented instructors, as well as the assistant instructors. There's a petition currently to stop the discontinuation from happening so that I and my fellow students are able to finish their degrees that will have worked so hard for us thus far. Not to mention all future culinarians that have dreams of doing what I'm lucky to be a part of today. Not all students, including myself, have the financial means to be a full-time student and will not be able to complete the program within the 12 to 18 months that the college is planning to give us. The fact that the college is even considering eliminating these programs is absolutely unfathomable and unfair to all current and future students.
This is public comment number 11 from Samantha Evans. Samantha's comment, why the WCC culinary program is vital for my future career and the culinary industry. Something my father told me when I was young really impacted me to this day. He would tell you that my daughter would figure out a way to burn water, meaning that is how bad and little knowledge I had in cooking. And my father bought me my first toy kitchen set. I fell in love with the kitchen, with the toy kitchen. I knew then I had interest in the culinary world. One of the things my father taught me was how to make something with what we had in the pantry. Thinking outside the box, I knew I needed to learn the basics first. When I looked in the WCC culinary program, I was intrigued by the courses it provided. Once I started the classes, I was even more excited and knew I wanted to do well. For the first time in my life, whether I had a kitchen at home or at school, I wanted to learn and hone in on my skill. The culinary program made every aspect of life exciting, whether it was working at the restaurant I was employed at or making dinner at home. Yes, there are other reasons why I chose to attend WCC culinary program. I was able to commute to the school within my commuting distance. The tuition fee and the credit was in my range. I have no financial support, so it's very hard for someone like me to get the education I needed. WCC provided me with everything I needed to get the degree I needed to have a bright future in the culinary industry. Once the classes had started, I realized there was more to WCC culinary program. The instructors were amazing. They treated me with respect and felt like family. Even my fellow classmates became my family, and we looked out for each other. Even when the school had to shut down due to COVID-19 virus. The instructors kept in touch with us and provided us with advice. The education never stopped, not even during the COVID-19 virus. The instructors believed in us and continued to educate us. I was taken by my instructors... Sorry, I was taken by my instructors, and I have never felt anything like that in my life. I never knew my college experience would be this wonderful, and now I'm being told that the culinary program may be taken away. It is a shame to see something so wonderful being taken away. The culinary industry is not something that should ever be taken away. It is an essential field in any part of this world. It is not only for professional chefs. Some students take the course for their own reasons. Some of the students would like to be able to cook for their family and friends. There are far too many people in this world who lack knowledge in food, culture, and a proper way of cooking. Also, WCC is for anyone who would love to get a fine education within their local community. WCC provides one of the best education in Michigan. I am proud to say I'm a student at the WCC culinary program. I ask that this program not be taken away, and perhaps you will reconsider taking this program away from the community. And you will reconsider taking this program away from the community of Washington County.
That was the last public comment.
That was the last public comment. Thank you. Were there any written communications?
There were nine received. Trustees should have them.
I do remember seeing those. Okay, thank you for that. Next up is special reports. We're going to be getting an Alucian update. President Blanca, are you ready?
I apologize, I'm muted.
No problem.
The board may recall when we approached you last year, it's over a year ago, somewhat over a year ago, that we did state that we would come back in a year to give you an update on the progress that Alucian has made over the year. And it has been a very significant year. They have accomplished a great deal. And joining us today is David Buck. And you may remember Dave because he was one of the presenters to us when we met originally, and he presented several times. And Dave happens to be our... And Dave is, uh, happens to be our, um. Dave, where are you, is, what's your title, you're a regional manager?
General manager, yeah.
General manager. And he is always available, provides excellent service throughout the in- and has been throughout the year. It's, um, really great to have a general manager who gives you the attention along with a C I O. We are also pleased this evening to have the opportunity to give you more of a formal introduction to our C I O, Todd Kruger. Who has just joined us, oh, well, actually right after the pandemic. So, um, we'll have a little opportunity to get to talk to him too. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave, um, to begin your presentation, please.
Good afternoon. As Dr. Blanca mentioned, it has been a year. And, uh, as such, Todd and I would like to, to give you an update on how it's been going, how the partnership's been going. Uh, I'm gonna cover some of the history that's happened this year and then Todd will cover what's going on now and what you can expect from the future. Next slide. So this will be the agenda we'll be covering today. Uh, I'll be covering the first three items, um, and Todd will take it over from there and close it out. Next slide. So last year, when, uh, the Lucian team presented to you, we talked a lot about our methodology. And this kind of, this slide kind of encapsulates that. And that's what we've begun already in this, in this past year. We embarked on a change management program. We want to ensure that any of the changes that we're making for the school are, are understood and have no unintended, uh, consequences and that they're in line with, with our intentions. We also began the I T strategic planning process. Now, we began gathering that information and we'll, uh, move into a more formalized planning process and ensuring that our, the I T strategic plan aligns with the school's strategic plan and supports it as it moves forward. Obviously, communications is vital and so we completed an I T communications plan already. We think it's important that, that the Washington constituency understand what's going on in I T uh, and what they can expect going forward, uh, both on a normal, uh, strategic basis as well as in emergency cases. And finally, we've begun, uh, the I T governance planning process. And this is simply the process that ensures that the school can communicate to Alucian their highest priorities and that we are engaged with the most important elements, uh, to support the school going forward. And we do all that collaboratively with the school, uh, in an effort to achieve that transformation that we're looking for in terms of I T support and delivery, uh, to this, to the campus constituency. Next slide. There we go. So I apologize, uh, for the busy nature of this slide, but it, it really kind of captures that. The last slide really talked about our methodology. This slide talks more about how we achieve that methodology. And we do that, uh, as you can see, it's the very center, beginning with a, a really highly capable on-campus I T team. Uh, we then organize those folks into those four quadrants that you see. Enterprise application services, which is the school's E R P system, banner, uh, Target X and all the associated systems that go with it. Infrastructure services, which are the network, the servers and all the various appliances that go, that go along with that. Leadership, hopefully should be obvious. And then user services, uh, those folks who actually go out to the campus, uh, and, and support the constituents in their use, uh, and, and of technology. We then surround that operation with a significant group of Alucian professionals, uh, from a remote position. What's great about that group is that it's not limited to I T expertise. We have, uh, Alucian experts in every element of higher education. From grant making to academic design to you name it, planning services. We're able to deliver, uh, expertise at any level, uh, of higher education that the school might need. As an example. Actually, immediately before the, the signing of the partnership agreement, it became to our attention that the H R payroll office had a significant issue, uh, with operations. They were unable to roll their payroll file from the past year to the current year. Uh, they put a lot of effort into it and unfortunately we were running out of time to get it fixed in order to meet the school's obligations. So they reached out, uh, knowing that we were engaged in discussions. Were we able to grab an Alucian, um, banner development professional, person who actually wrote the system? Uh, and get them engaged and over the course of the next, oh, sixty or so hours over a long weekend. Uh, we were able to get that resolved and the school was able to, to meet its obligation to, to students and employees. So. That, that connection with that greater Alucian body of knowledge is a daily, uh, direct communication, phone call, email. We have, we know the names of these folks, these aren't just folks that we, we get into a queue and, and, and request help from. We actually know their names, uh, and they know Washington. Next slide. So the initial transition, uh, is a critical element, alright, it's how we get off to the right start, get off on the right foot. Uh, and it was, uh, was a very interesting time at, at Washtenaw. If you remember, the, the original thought was that, that, well, the agreement states that we would start, uh, it would issue on July one and that Alucia would take over formal operations on August one, giving us a, a thirty-day window really to, to build our systems and to, to gain knowledge of the school so that we could get off, um, with a quick start. We quickly realized that wasn't gonna do the job. Anybody who's been associated with this campus for a length of time knows that in a typical year, it is a very busy campus during the summer. Uh, and we realized pretty quickly that to take that month timeframe would not, uh, adequately support the activities going on. So we actually got started a little early, we actually got started in that last week of June. Primarily wanted to get ready for those, uh, those vital summer programs that are, that are important to both, to both the campus community as well as surrounding community. The ironworkers, United Associates. I personally traveled out to Annapolis to, to meet with the U A so they could communicate their needs and I could assure them that the campus would meet their needs. While there, they decided to, to surprise me with a new, um, a new request. Uh, they were gonna ask every one of their, um, at their students to bring their own personal laptops. Um, that was an unexpected addition of about two thousand personal devices, uh, coming on campus in a short amount of time. Uh, each one of those devices obviously was gonna wanna connect to the campus infrastructure. Thankfully, they did give us that warning, we were able to meet that expectation and, uh, both of those programs, as, as others, uh, were successful. Uh, another important element, uh, was that, you know, of course, the, the camp, students were returning to campus immediately after the U A. We did not have, again, time to, the luxury of that first month to get ready. Uh, so we quickly, as we agreed to with this, with the, uh, board, we needed to extend offers to each of the Washtenaw I T team. And in order to do that, we had to meet with each one of them to understand their goals and their needs. We did that in that last week of June and we made those offers and we were fortunate enough to retain, uh, twelve of, of those staff members. Problem not being enough, we quickly had to ramp up our, our recruiting efforts, um, and secure another sixteen, uh, local staff members, local team members, uh, for a total of twenty-eight, uh, all of whom, uh, live in southeast Michigan, uh, in or immediately adjacent to Washtenaw County. An important success, uh, element in that recruiting effort, uh, we were able to entice, uh, an employee back to campus from their position at Ford Motor Company. Uh, the gentleman had previously served as a Washtenaw, uh, director in the applications area. His knowledge was considerable, uh, and thankfully he did want to come work with us, uh, at a Washtenaw for Alucia. Uh, his presence on the campus has made a significant, uh, uh, impact. He, he understood where the school was and he's up, has been able to help us not only, uh, get up to speed with what's happening now, but help us move more quickly into improvements, so significant success. Another concern, um, the digital media arts department, as an example, um, depends heavily, their students depend heavily on the labs that the school provides, the, the software and equipment associated with it are quite expensive. And infrequently, those students have no other access to those systems. Uh, we were able to, they make heavy use of Apple and the Apple environment. We were able to recruit and retain the team as most experienced with that environment and, and made that transition for those students and that faculty, uh, much. We also realized that our normal timeframe of taking that thirty-day period to start up our help desk, uh, was also not going to do the job. We normally take that month to gather information, build our knowledge base and, and produce our systems. We did that instead in a week. Stood that up, um, we, it wasn't perfect in the first week, but we quickly moved to perfecting it with this, with the, uh, campus's health. We got that perfected over the coming weeks so that we were ready to go when, uh, U A arrived and when students arrived. We also began immediately implementing, uh, the Alucian training of our I T team and the Alucian standards and the I T L standards. I T L stands for Information Technology Infrastructure Library. You might liken it to the I S O nine thousand of I T service delivery. I mention it because this is a significant, um, pillar of the delivery of services by Alucia. And giving example, a cornerstone of that, uh, process is that we focus first on returning any failed system to service and we later, uh, do the work to figure out why it happened. It's a significant separation, get the school back up and running successfully first and then we'll investigate why it happened. Uh, again, it, it leads to a much, uh, more consistent delivery of services to the campus. Finally, with all the changes that were happening, we thought it was important that we get early start on the communication plan. And we worked with the, with the campus leaders, uh, to align our communication with, with their messaging and make sure that the campus understood what was going on and what they could do to access services. Next slide, please. So as you might imagine, uh, this slide looks a little different than it might otherwise. We always begin with an operations focus in the first year. It's vital that we take on all the responsibilities of the previous team to make sure that the school continues to function and deliver services to the student, um, as they always have. So that was a focus, uh, process updates and, and project updates. Uh, we rarely come into a school that is sitting still and certainly not true at Washtenaw, very busy place. So as we entered the campus, there were a number of projects and processes that were in-flight and we needed, immediately needed to integrate our teams, uh, into those to, to keep moving forward. And then, of course, the pandemic hit and it pretty much changed our focus, as we'll, as we'll, uh, show later. Next slide. So studies show, uh, that for each person, uh, that enters the Washtenaw campus, they're gonna bring on average four devices or personal devices. Securing those devices, securing Washtenaw's, uh, infrastructure and their data is an initial and a continuous focus. We will continue to, to focus on security, you'll hear that in virtually every report that we deliver going forward. It's not unusual, as Alucia gains access to a campus, to find that their security stance is not what it should be. Fortunately, uh, pursued through some good leadership, uh, Washtenaw was not in that situation, we had already embarked on the plan and we're actually accomplishing some, uh, uh, effective changes, we were able to integrate our teams into that, perfect the plan and really get some things done in a very short order. But again, it will continue to be a primary focus. As I mentioned, the help desk, the twenty-four by seven, uh, enterprise help desk, the local help desk and the item below that, the I T service management best practices. Those were an essential element of Alucia's delivery of services. We use those frankly to simplify the access to I T support for the campus. Part of that was to, to make sure there was only one phone number and one email for anybody to use to get any form of support in terms of technology. Whether it be Alucia and staff for playing, uh, responding or Washtenaw staff, we shared that information. We wanted to simplify that, we don't, we want the campus constituency to either make a call or send an email and then return to their work, knowing that response will occur. And so that was an important part of, of our initial actions. For each one of those requests for help, uh, Alucia sends out a survey when we feel that the work has been completed. It's a simple, very brief survey, scored from one being poor to five being excellent. We obviously love to get excellent scores, but frankly, we learn more from those that are less than five. When we do receive those kinds of surveys, we go out to the constituent, we find out what we could have done better. We return that to the team and we use that to improve our processes and procedures and standards going forward. We also share those surveys with the college, with the leadership. We think it's important that they understand the nature of the interactions we're having with the campus and can give us feedback as well. We also provide significant levels of reporting, this is just an example there you see on the screen. We provide a monthly report in this form, uh, to the school's leadership detailing our call activity and our, and our response rates and our answering times and our first call resolution rates and then on and on. We think it's important that the school, we see this information so they again can judge whether we are performing to their standards and in the direction that they have, have chosen towards. Along with that report, of course, we deliver a monthly report of our general activities. Um, and, and frankly, weekly reports on our call performance and our kind of response performance.
May I interrupt for just one minute, Dave?
Absolutely.
Cause I, I, you know, as a president, I just would like the board to know that. I receive this report every single month. I know exactly what's happening in I T. What I really value in addition to all of this, I can compare from last month to this month, everything that's going on. Every single comment of, you know, the rating of one to five. Every single comment that a faculty member or a student makes, I read, I get to read it. So it's like, it's the most, it, it's the best report anyone can have trying to observe, uh, you know, and keep aware of what's going in I T operations. It's extremely valuable to a C E O. And then, when I get this report, the only reason I'm stopping it now because I just saw this report, when I get it. Yeah, we, we, first of all, we meet every week. When I get this report, then we have a meeting and we go over this report if I have any questions. So there's no doubt in my mind ever of what's going on in I T. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Okay, back to you, Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, we do, we do feel it's vital, uh, to be transparent in our operations, it's a long engage, a long relationship. Um, and we wanna make sure that, that we're all very clear on what was going on, so very happy to hear that. Uh, one of the highlights, uh, in our operational focus, uh, we work with a lot of schools and, um, we have relationships, uh, with various vendors, Dell being one of them. And so, uh, our experience with those schools told us that when we arrived at Washtenaw, they make, give a use of Dell computer systems. We are, we were aware of a program with Dell that, uh, trained our local team members to be Dell certified technicians. And although that's wonderful and, and provides a higher level of service, just as importantly with the training, uh, the Dell company extends preferred pricing to the college. That effort alone in the first year has garnered a savings to the school of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and we expect that to be an annual savings. So those are the kinds of things we're, we're looking for as we move forward as well as how can we help the school get better, uh, and save money as well. Finally, uh, as we move through this operational focus, uh, and our, our staff are getting up to speed and we're training them, as they move out onto the campus and they're working with the campus constituency, they're taking continuous notes uh, about the condition of the I T infrastructure. Alright, they're gonna ask themselves as they move through the campus, is the network performing the way it should be for a school, a school like Washtenaw? Is the Wi-Fi coverage adequate? Uh, are the applications responsive when I, when I try to pull up one of the programs, does it come up quickly? Is it doing the job that it needs to do? So as they move through the campus and they're working with the campus, uh, constituency, they're taking notes on all this. They bring it back to the, uh, camp, the I T leadership and we begin the process of what we call our lifecycle plan. We put that in a detailed inventory. We do the research to find out when that appliance or computer or software application or service entered the school's inventory and when they can expect it to, to sunset or to expire or to need to be replaced. We build that lifecycle and we present it along with a plan to the campus leadership. We feel it's important that the school understand where they stand in terms of, of their equipment and their, and their infrastructure and where it needs to go. We wanna give them plenty of warning. As any new piece of equipment is acquired, it goes into our lifecycle and our inventory. And that piece of equipment is associated with their lifespan, right? So the school will know immediately, as soon as they acquire it, when it's likely they'll need to replace it. And they can plan accordingly. And they can plan accordingly for their budget. And so we were able to get that plan started very quickly. It probably was a little bit more expensive than than would have otherwise been preferred. But it was better to know what needed to happen rather than keep moving forward without that knowledge.
And if I may interrupt again. Dave, sorry. Well, you know, it's kind of like a deferred maintenance plan that we have. It is a deferred maintenance plan that we have for our facilities. It's the same, it's really the same concept for infrastructure update planning. Because these things are extremely expensive. And not only are they extremely expensive, but we have to rely on them for the appropriate data. We have to make sure it's safe, it's secure, that it won't, you know, if there's any issues with the infrastructure or piece of equipment, it's it 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 could really impact our operations. So I just wanted to add that as well because it's it's been enlightening for me. And I know for Bill Johnson to know like how much money we need and how much we have to plan to make sure we have the right infrastructure going forward and right now. So that that was, it, that's been extremely beneficial. Okay, back to you, Dave.
Well, yeah, we want to make sure that the school has all the information they need and frankly, time to plan. That's again, why whenever a piece comes into inventory, it's immediately added to the plan. We've had people question, wait a minute, you just bought this. Why are you telling us when it's going to be, need to be replaced? Well, the more lead time we can give you, the school, the better planning they can put in place. So that is our, that is our practice. Next slide, please. So process updates, as I mentioned, when we enter a new school, we definitely, we'd never find them standing still. And that was definitely the case here at Washtenaw. Very dynamic campus. So when we arrived, there was a number of important projects and processes that were in flight. Obviously, the website. We were proud of the fact that we were able to bring the Lucian web programming professionals in collaboration with the school's content professionals. And we were able to get that website up and running and live in a very short amount of time. We also implemented a new process for the course program of study. Now, that sounds cryptic, but it is a regulatory requirement that the school was aware of and it already embarked on. So we need to get up to speed with with that team very quickly. It is important to the students. It impacts their financial aid. They need to be able to declare their program, make sure they are eligible for the aid that they're receiving. So when we entered, we immediately began working with the financial aid staff and the registrar staff. We were able to pull in the finance staff so that we could bring all those elements together and make sure that it was met the successful expression of that project and that we met the timeframe required by the beds. We implemented the SAR scheduling system for the career transitions office and group advising. Obviously, any work we can do to lower the barriers to our students interacting with those groups is is an improvement towards retaining those students. One of the big projects we immediately embarked on and are still working with is the Target X and Banner integration. As you probably were, Target X was deployed by the school. It's an important tool and it already is an important tool, actually. And lowering the barriers to the students applying and then entering that enrollment and registration process for the school. Obviously, anything we can do to lower those barriers, barriers going to improve the recruitment and ultimately the retention of students as well. We integrated the Purple Briefcase system with Banner as well, facilitating improved student job search. Again, it's vital, right? The the easier it is for our students to find these positions, the more likely we are going to recruit new students. We upgraded DegreeWorks, which is the system that Washtenaw students use to track their progress toward their certificate or degree. Again, we find that the the better the information the student has on their progress, the more likely they are to stay and more likely we are to retain as students. We implemented the Twilio Copilot System. The school already had a pretty capable automated text messaging system to communicate with our students. It was working very well, but over the course of time and and spread of technology, we were finding that increasingly those messages were ending up in our students' spam folders. Obviously, not an effective place for them to be. So we worked with the vendor Twilio and we employed one of the new products. And we were able to change that and improve that read rate for those messaging. Again, the better we communicate with our students, the more likely they are to stay students with Washtenaw. Finally, we've we've established or embarked on a review of the online student support service capabilities for the campus. We brought a professional IT team or student professional higher ed team from Washtenaw, from Lucian to the campus. Then, well, not with the campus, actually, we had to do it virtually. But those, that team met with ten different departments, including admissions, financial aid, registrars, academic support. They conducted focus groups with each one of those groups. And they talked about planning, resource alignment, the expectations of our students in the campus, communication with our students in the campus, and assessment of how we were doing. We brought all that work together and produced produced a report for the school detailing where we were seeing successes or we might see some gaps and where we might be able to bring things together to make a little more seamless interface for students. That plan's been submitted and being reviewed by the campus and we're looking forward to getting started on some of that work in the very near future. Next slide, please. And then this happened. Obviously, on March nineteenth, what's is interestingly, the day that the Washtenaw CIO Todd Krueger showed up for work, the campus was closed, obviously for for the protection of the students. Thankfully, we already were established. And so we already had our, we talked about before, our help desk was already up and running. Thankfully, that service is serviced from off campus. It was already ready to go. We were able to quickly shift all calls to be answered by the help desk. So there was a seamless shift. Students didn't didn't see anything different. We were able to take those calls, forward them to the right parties or take messages and make sure those got to the right parties as well. So it was an important distinction that there was no gap in in communication with our students. We also, because of that rapid move off of campus, we need to do a lot of work to facilitate access to the college systems from remote situations for a lot of folks who had never had that experience before. So we need to make sure their credentials are in line and ready to go and they could get what they needed to keep doing their jobs or conducting their their academic careers. We also realized pretty quickly that this was a big change for a lot of folks. They had never had the experience of conducting their work or their academic work from home or from a remote location. So we conduct, we built some training really quickly to help them understand how to better use those systems. And we think that helped help quite a bit. One of the more interesting experiences we had, unfortunately, I'm not sure who did this, but they, the the school's accreditation visit was scheduled for this period of time. And so we were able to work with the college and the HLC to facilitate that visit on a virtual platform. I'm not sure anybody involved had ever had that experience, but I understand it pretty well. Obviously, you've seen the experience of the support for the remote board meetings. Our team had to grab resources. They had to grab approximately one hundred and sixty laptops from the campus that were already in place doing other things. We had to identify them, bring them in, repurpose them, which meant, you know, reloading the software on each one of these devices and customizing it for the use of each person and getting those out to the folks working remotely. We were also quickly able to extend the school's telephone system to off campus through the use of soft phones. The system allowed administrators and faculty to be able to communicate with students as if they were on campus. As I had mentioned before, the digital media arts, digital media arts department makes heavy use. Their students depend on the use of their labs in order to access what is frankly, some quite expensive Adobe software. We were able to work with Adobe to get them to extend a free summer program to those students for the Adobe Creative Program, keeping those students intact as they move through this period of time. We also were quickly able to work with the school in developing an application on the website that facilitated the school, the students applying for their CARES funding. Finally, we've we've realized pretty quickly that a lot of the process, the business processes on campus still depended on some physical printing, work orders and and purchase orders and the like. We quickly needed to modify those systems to produce electronic documents so that they could be communicated electronically to their destination. We also built a new transcript system, allowing our students to remotely request and receive their transcripts, again, keeping them intact. Probably the most important thing to note about all this is it was done in just less than three weeks. We had a lot to get done. Next slide, please. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Todd Krueger. For those of you who haven't met him yet, Todd is our Washtenaw CIO. We were so fortunate to be able to recruit Todd from Cornell University. Todd brings about twenty years of IT leadership experience with him. Fifteen of those alone are in higher education. His experience has been vital in our move off campus and continued support for the remote activities. Todd, it's all yours.
Thank you very much, Dave. It's a pleasure to be part of the team. It's a pleasure to be part of Washtenaw Community College. And just just a quick background, when I was first contacted about this opportunity, it was amazing to me how much my vision for IT, for customer service, for collaboration, for working together and leveraging technologies to difference maker for college, how that was in alignment with the needs of this position and with what, you know, a Lucian does. So it really was a great fit and it's been a great fit. And it was, as Dave alluded to, the the day before my first day on the job, I was informed that I'd be working remotely. So it's been a quite a unique experience and, you know, note to anyone thinking about this, please do not start a job during a pandemic. It's not the easiest thing, but I enjoyed it. And I've been able to witness firsthand so many of these things that Dave has gone over. And quite frankly, I've been very impressed with the with the team, how agile they've been, how willing to to go the extra round, do what needs to be done. I've been very impressed by just really how all that has happened. And I've also been impressed by our ability to reach out to the greater team at a Lucian and leverage their skill and expertise when needed. So what I'm going to do here just the next little while is talk about some of our current and future efforts with regard to help desk user services, the infrastructure, cybersecurity and applications. Next slide, please. So help desk and user services, as you can imagine, one of our biggest focal points has been helping people work from home, working through the connectivity issues, making sure they had access to our virtual private network or VPN for short. You know, you know, setting up so they can remote to their desktop computer, dealing with any of the connectivity issues. That's been a a constant effort and something that obviously has gotten better with time, but that's something that we still continue to work with them on. As as Dave mentioned, there were one hundred and sixty computers handed out, many of which were lab computers that were handed out for working from home. We've also purchased the additional sixty-five computers that you see there, which also for various forms of working remotely. So getting those systems set up, configured, ensuring people knew how to access resources remotely has has been a big part of our efforts. And overall, I'd say it's gone very smoothly. We purchased quite a few computers of late, three hundred and sixty for the WTMC and another one sixty laptops. And I think about a hundred hotspots to address the digital divide and, you know, provide to WCC students as well. So so one of these that we will be doing very soon when these computers arrive is imaging these systems. As you can imagine, imaging hundreds of systems in a pandemic environment is is a big job. Something that we've been planning and we have a, we have a very good plan to get that done in the most efficient and effective manner possible to to meet the needs of our timeline. So one other thing that we'll be doing is on return to campus, we'll be reprovisioning those aforementioned one hundred and sixty computers, getting the right software on them, making sure they they work properly. And then we will be repairing the labs and updating them to include the right software, including Office twenty nineteen. Next slide, please. So the aging infrastructure, as Dave mentioned, it's been really a team effort and a and a and a great effort to to understand what needed to be addressed, where where the risk points were, what we need to fix right away. And then we've been going about one by one, trying to get each one of those issues taken care of. Now, you see a picture of Pam there. What you may not recognize is the little white device on the table next to her. That's an access point. So we were able to purchase a large number of access points and to get those installed, they're almost all installed across campus. But an access point is, is an access point allows you to connect to the internet. So we have to have them spread across the campus so that the people in various different locations can access the internet. We have to have enough of them so people can access the internet. So we've done that in the process of our current project. We've added access points or APs, as we call them, to the GM and LA facilities and also to the automotive shop area. So we've been doing that. We've also replacing fiber for faster internal network speed. And we're increasing the internet bandwidth as well. We did that. In the in the near future, we will be upgrading our phone system. Phone system was a, it needed to be upgraded. So that's on a roadmap. It should be done next month or two. And then another project that we had to do was improve our backup system infrastructure. So sometimes the fixes are 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 big and require lots of funding and sometimes they're more processed and more configuration. We had a challenge with moving a lot of data. And and we had, if you will, a large pipe moving data that was being choked down by going into a smaller pipe. And so we were able to reconfigure that, get that set up so the data moved in a much more speedy manner and was able to get that that data back. And of course, data backup is a critical component of our security posture. Next slide, please. So cybersecurity. One of our key goals of late has been the transition of our campus, Campus Works Chief Information Security Officer, Bill O'Shark, to a Chief Information and Security Officer, Will Laney, that we recruited from a Lucian. He also has experience at University of Georgia and the University of Oregon in security in higher education. So his expertise is is invaluable and we've already been able to leverage his expertise. So we look forward to that continued partnership, but thankfully, we were able to facilitate a smooth transition. PII are Personally Identifiable Information Identification and Remediation. So PII includes social security numbers, passport information, credit cards, bank accounts, driver's license, that type of thing. Making sure that we only have the PII that we need. Making sure that what we do have is secure and only those who need access to it can access it. Making sure that we redact it or delete it if we don't need it. You know, ensuring that that we keep it only as long as as we need to and that only those who need it have access to it is obviously a key component of our security posture. Patch management is another one of those critical components. We don't want any vulnerabilities out there that expose our network. So we're really making an effort to get all patches applied in a very timely manner. That's a good component. Access review is another component of the security posture. What that basically means is make sure that people have access, what they need to access, and the systems only have access to what they need to have access to. Critical component. And then final, finally, multi-factor authentication. What that is, is when you log into a system, you need the user ID. You also need the password and we have a second form of authentication. So when I log in, it, I put in my username, my password, and then it sends me a notification to my cell phone where it says, hey, did you just log in from this location? And I say yes, and then it lets me in. If I didn't say yes, then it wouldn't let me in. So someone else, if they had my username and password, would not be able to log in and act as me. So that's another key component of security. Next slide, please. Applications. So you'll see we have a lot going on here. And really what we're, one of the big things that we've been able to do with the partnership with a Lucian is leverage our functional expertise to utilize Banner to its fullest potential. This has been huge. One of the things that we've had here at Washtenaw is customizations, lots of custom applications. And that causes problems for several reasons. First of all, when you have a custom application, you become very dependent on whoever it was that wrote that custom application. So if they leave, so does the knowledge of that custom, custom application and the ability to fix it, to make sure it works, so on and so forth. The other thing to keep in mind with custom applications is they can cause issues with data, data integrity and security. And they also prevent you from being agile. It's it's very critical that we as an IT shopper are agile as possible and we we have to maintain. And we, we have to maintain all these customizations. It becomes really challenging to be able to do so. Other projects in the application space include Banner 9 self-service. So what, what self-service amounts to is providing a modern, user-friendly application to be able to perform the various functions for students, for finance, for employees. So Banner 9 self-service is a, is an upcoming project. Banner workflow, one example of Banner workflow is HR onboarding, offboarding. What workflow does is, you know, provides the workflow or the tasks that need to be done to accomplish these different onboarding, offboarding and other tasks. So we'll be implementing that as well. And then finally, operational reporting to facilitate student success and retention. That I believe is going to be a game changer. We're currently in the RFP process, the request for, you know, evaluation process of various proposals. And we believe that that's going to really help us improve our ability to facilitate student success and retention. Next slide, please. The path forward, so where do we go from here? And how do we ensure that we continue to align what we do with our goals of facilitating student success and retention? And with facilitating online learning. So we'll be partnering with the right constituents to develop an IT strategic plan. So we have someone at Alucion that specializes in this and they'll be helping us make this happen. This generally is a five-year roadmap. And then from, from that five-year roadmap, we'll develop a one-year annual operational plan that will kind of lay out our line of sight, what we need to be working on. Governance model, Dave already mentioned that, so I won't go into detail there. But basically, it ensures the, the right people are engaged in deciding how IT resources will be prioritized. Cybersecurity audit is a standard offering, much like a financial audit, to, to ensure all of our cybersecurity policies, processes, you know, et cetera, are as they need to be. And then finally, something that's near and dear to my heart is partner and collaborate to meet specific needs. I meet with various deans on a regular basis. I meet with, with the faculty and a faculty meeting every couple of weeks. I also partner with the Center for Interactive Teaching and Learning and really partner with the constituents I need to across campus to ensure we are facilitating vision of Washington Community College. Next slide, please. Okay, any questions for Dave or for me?
Would the board like to ask any questions about our Alucion update?
I guess I'll, I'll say a quick comment right now. The last year has definitely been eventful. You were thrown into the fire right away with our conference services. And then you were thrown into the fire again when the pandemic hit. And I know that it was a controversial decision back in June, back last June. And I know that a lot of people voiced their concerns and they felt hurt. But I got to tell you, I, I am glad that you are here. I, I did all that I could to help alleviate the pain of letting those people go who didn't want to stay. And I still feel bad about it. But given the balance of everything that's happened, and I see that all the things that you've accomplished in the reporting, I've never been, I've never had this kind of report in the last six years. And we're now getting detailed IT status reports. And I feel like projects are now in a line, you know, staff are not forced to do projects on the margins when they have time. You're actually managing the project full-on with a project manager. I, I just see a tremendous amount of benefit to what we have gotten here so far. I, and again, I know it wasn't without pain and I do still feel bad about that. But I'm also glad that we have all these benefits too. So that's kind of my thought right now on this. I really appreciate the detail that we're seeing here. Would any other board members like to ask questions or reflect on the last year here?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Um, I just, a few questions. How many Alucion staff are on campus on a given day?
It, it fluctuates considerably right now because of the pandemic. In the absence of, they come to campus when necessary to keep the school functioning. And so that's been our process since it began. On a typical basis, there'd be 28.
20?
28.
28. And how many of the former staff, IT staff have been rehired by Alucion?
Initially 12, we still have nine of those.
And the, the Apple expert? Is that one of the 12?
Indeed, yes.
Okay, and so there are nine of those left?
Correct.
Okay. And how many of the customized applications have been dealt with? Or integrated or whatever your language is?
I'm gonna have to get, do some research to get you the exact numbers of that.
Well, is it a lot or a few or?
Quite a lot, actually, yes.
Okay.
And it, it spans a considerable effort between implementing new, fixing old and, and that kind of thing.
Do you have a, a date, a projected date of when that would be completed?
Not per se. Those kinds of efforts are kind of an ongoing thing, but I would expect that the bulk be completed in the next 24 months type of thing. It's a considerable effort.
Yeah, I understand that. And you say, Todd, you meet with faculty regularly or?
Yeah, so I meet with a group chaired by Claire Sparklin, meet with them, I think it's online faculty, that's every couple of weeks.
Oh, the online faculty, they're mostly online now?
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you.
Do other board members have questions or comments? President Blanca, do you want to add anything here?
No, other than the fact that I would like to thank the board for their support. And I'd like to thank Alucion for the great job that you have been doing. There has never been a time that I wasn't able to reach someone. And, and I mean a time, because sometimes, you know, I have a thought at 10 o'clock at night and I feel like I have to have this answer right now. And they've always been there. And I'm very happy to read the comments. When I read those comments, I see that they are working with faculty. I see they are working out with, you know, they're working with students. And that, that's a good thing. I was really pleased with the people that they hired from our campus. And in, all of those were good choices, but I was really pleased to see that, like in the DMA, Digital Media Arts, that they, you know, took people's advice as to who they should, you know, have come back. And I was really happy when an individual, and I don't know if I can say, can I say his name, Peter Bracco? I, I can't, I just didn't. I was so impressed. This is what really, in a way, kind of made me feel that we did make the right decision. So Mr. Bracco left the organization, probably about a year before Alucion came aboard. And he went to work for Ford Motor Company. And then when Alucion came on board, he applied to work at Alucion. That's the individual that Dave was referring to. And it's, it's been great for us as a college because of the expertise that he brings, you know, the college knowledge that he has. But it also says a lot when somebody, when, when they see you make a move and they decide, gee, I want to work for that company and still work with Washington. So that, that to me was a, a good, a really good move, made me feel good. It was so. Other than that, I like being kept informed. And that, thank you. So thank you for the tough decision. You made the tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Before going on, does, do any other board members want to make a comment or question on the Alucion contract? Okay, I'll just say thank you once again. This was very detailed and I really appreciate all that you've given us here.
It's our pleasure.
Okay. Moving on to tab B, monthly reports. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the monthly personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second? I need a second?
Second from Milliken.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was muted.
Oh, no problem. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations? Questions or comments here?
Of course I have a question.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Elizabeth Orbits is leaving after 19 years of service of various kinds with counselors and advising. And I noticed that the advisors are currently under her umbrella, but we've hired a director of advising. So I'm wondering if the advisors are going to move from the support services to the director of advising? Do you see what I'm asking?
Yes, and that would be Linda, Linda Blakey. Linda, could you respond to that?
Um, yes, we've hired a, Ashley Wasniewski, who's our new Director of Advising and Success Coaching.
Yes.
Advisors will report to Ashley. Ashley reports in the, in moments, the moment services area.
Right.
And then we've hired our new, new dean of students, Johnson. And she has the counseling staff that will report to Ashley. We've kind of reconfigured a little bit, so.
But if I may add to that, actually, I'm going to add a question to you, Linda.
Okay.
I mean, if you could explain why you've done it this way, because of the student impact and, and why, do you know what I mean? I think, I think the board would like to know that.
Okay, so we have, we have the coaches and the advisors and the counselors, because counselors do about 40% of all the advising. And so they'll still be involved in all the advising process, but we're getting students involved, the advisors and the coaches much more on the front end with, before the student is even registered. So coaches, advisors are working with the student to make sure there's not any barriers to them getting enrolled and getting ready for the semester. We've developed a success team that will have our coaches, advisors, counselors, librarians that this, that are assigned to the student by program. And so they're working, the success team works with the student well before even the start of the semester. So we can make sure that the student has no barriers to getting ready for enrollment.
And that's going to be under McCaskill?
Yes, yes. Um, yes.
And also.
Again, that's all under Student Services, so that, that whole area is still under Student Services. But the behavior for, for the counselors that we have kind of, we have the advising, but also the behavioral health and wellness. So our counselor is providing personal counseling, support services, as well as wellness series that we, you know, we don't just, we're proactive in terms of the mental health services and, and information that we provide to students, not just the waiting for them to be in crisis. So that's all coming under the, the new.
New dean of students.
The new dean of students, correct.
I have one more question. As we lose people who run the, the buildings, like, like Guy Bancroft is leaving the mechanical systems after 12 years, are we bringing in new people to train them before they leave?
May I defer this to Bill Johnson?
Hello, hi, this is Bill.
I know.
Greetings. Can, can you, can you state your question again, Trustee Hatcher?
I'm just noticing that this person who's in charge of mechanical systems and technician for refrigeration has been there for 12 years. And I assume we'll have to have someone who's in charge of refrigeration. And I just wonder if there's some overlap. So how are we training the new people to run?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Well, this, with this, with this particular vacancy, we didn't have a, a lot of notice. So typically, we would have had more, more notice for transition. But with that said, both with Craig Whipstock as the EVP, as well as Bo, Bo Bergen, they both have the expertise in the area along with some of the other staff. So we're, we're, we're very confident that with the strength of, of the staff within facilities, that we'll be able to provide the right kind of training for the new person.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? On personnel? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Billiken, yes.
Treasurer Davis? I think she had to leave the meeting. Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McNay Morton?
McNay Morton, yes. Can I make this, I couldn't find my unmute button, but I did now. I would like to say, I would like to give congratulations to the people who are retiring or leaving the college for the years of service. It's been greatly appreciated. And I just want them to know that the board is aware and of all of their contributions to our institution and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is tab C, the facilities development report. Do any board members have questions on the facilities report? VP Johnson, did you want to add anything here for us?
As a point of note for the board, is that, that you will notice that, that we have a lot of active projects. So we have about 45 projects that are active at this moment. Facilities team is working very hard and actually taking advantage of the largely unoccupied campus to get some, some pretty critical work, work done that should prove fruitful when everybody returns in terms of causing lesser disruption, including some energy saving projects, of course, some parking lot repair projects, a number, a number of other major projects. So the team is working very, very hard on, on, on campus to prepare the college.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ruth.
How's the roof on the LA building?
The roof on the, we just finished, as you'll note, there is a project here for the IR study, the infrared study. We just got those results back. And Craig Whipstock and his team are prioritizing, there, there are some leaks on the LA building and that is a project that we will be taking on shortly.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Any other facilities questions? Okay. Next on the agenda then, remarks of the Board of Trustees. Do any board members have remarks? Would any Board of Trustees like to comment?
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, Dave.
I just want to say that I appreciated all the comments on the Culinary Arts Program, which I think the history of the Community College has been very strong for culinary arts. I also want to note that we had a bunch of written communications that Vanessa forwarded to us and I read all of them. I'm wondering in the future if we could, when we get this many, especially this many, but certainly when we get one or two written communications, if we could at least put their names in the record, just as the people that asked to be read at the meeting had their names in the record. I'd like to, at this moment, actually, I printed out a few of the ones that came to us. us for my files going down the road as I look more at the Culinary Arts Program. I'm just going to read some names of people that communicated to us so that they know that their comments have been received by the Board. If I leave any out, I'm sorry, but the ones that I have in front of me, Letitia Simmons, John Lucessi, Nana Kubo, Angie Olson, James Eastman, and one that came in that I can't find a name attached to, so it's an anonymous one. I just want all of these people to know that their communications were received by the Board. Some of us will or have or will be doing some follow-up with the administration, and I just want to know that your concerns have been heard, and I appreciate reaching out to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do other Board members?
I have a comment. I think it would behoove some of the Board members to find out the background of the Culinary Arts Department in the past, so that you have a clear understanding of that, of the department itself. You don't have to take it from me, because I know some people on the Board don't care for me, and I said it. But however, all I'm saying is just do some background work on it. Find out for yourself. Find out what's the past of this. I'm not saying to get rid of the program. This is a great program, but before we start taking names and filing away, find out what's going on with the program in the past. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Do other Board members want to comment? Did I see Ruth's hand up? Go ahead, Ruth.
I just was, to follow up on Dave's comment, I think it was mentioned that there were nine written comments, and you've mentioned, I think, six and one anonymous, so there might be a few missing. If Vanessa could add the ones to the minutes so that they are listed, no one's missed. I think there might be three or four names that Dave didn't mention.
Okay, I know that one of them was anonymous, but we'll double-check and make sure the names are in the minutes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would other Board members like to make comments at this time? Okay. One thing I'll say, it's never easy to make these decisions when you know that it's affecting people, that these are affecting individual people. And I want people to know that I have never taken these things lightly, that I'm always looking at things on balance and to the future. I know it's painful, you know, I've been riffed, I've gone through so much pain myself, and it's one of the reasons why I try to put in protective measures for individuals so that you have a soft landing when possible. I'm sorry, but there are just many, many reasons that go into these decisions. I want you to know that I am thinking of you. I still think of our IT people, I still think of, you know, this isn't the first program cut, we've cut other programs too in the past. Things go up and down, they go up and down, and they oscillate, and, you know, who's to say we don't reboot this after we get past pandemic and after we get past, you know, these big issues we're dealing with? I am fond of the culinary program. You know, Michigan is one of the biggest tourist destinations in our country with our lakes and Mackinac and Traverse City and everything that we have to offer in Michigan. I understand the need to support Michigan commerce with our education as well. It's not an easy decision. I want you to know that I also hear you. All right, do any other Board members want to make comments? If not, I will turn it over to President Blanca.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I also would like to thank the individuals that commented today, and it's true, the Board does take these comments, your comments, very seriously, as do I. And at this time, what I would like to do though, is ask VPI Hearns if she could just add some things to the culinary program, like the facts about where we are at, very concisely. VPI Hearns?
Right. Thank you, Dr. Blanca. So the first thing I think that's very important, you know, at Washdaw Community College, and as a community college in general, is that we have, of course, always a strong commitment to our students, and so, you know, we want to be very clear that we have a commitment to make sure that every single student who is in our culinary program currently will complete the program over the next 18 months, and that will include for all the students who qualify for financial, not financial aid, for scholarships through our foundation, and we will be doing that by developing an individual learning plan for every single student and scheduling courses and all support services around those learning plans. In addition, like all of our occupational programs at the college, we're consistently thinking of ways to be responsive to the needs of industry and developing programs that align to jobs and careers in industry. And so we do have, in response to our partners, an apprenticeship program with Destination Ann Arbor that aligns to the competencies of the National Restaurant Association. And again, that's for us to be aligning to what the needs and listing to what industry, what those needs are. We will continue to provide education and prepare for career paths in the hospitality industry based on the skills and competencies that are in demand and defined by industries. And as a community college, you know, that is our mission, and we'll continue to do that as we support the students at finishing up the program. Thank you.
And thank you, Vice President Hearns. I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to take a few moments to acknowledge all the remarkable work that has gone into the development of our exceptional online programming. No institution could have been fully prepared for the pandemic, the impact of the pandemic, and the sudden shift from traditional operations to online. But because we already had the infrastructure in place, we were able to respond swiftly and effectively to the needs of our students and move not just our courses, but every experience of the Washdaw Community College online experience. It's important to remember that online education is not new at Washdaw Community Colleges. And you know, at a lot of institutions, it is new. We have a long history of high-quality online course development, which is facilitated by the Center for Interactive Teaching and Learning. We can also be proud that we have been approved to offer 100% online course and programs by the Higher Learning Commission since 2013. Since going fully online in March, our online offerings have only gotten better as our faculty continue to learn through extensive training and support. Creating an online campus experience has also been part of our strategic plan from the beginning, nine years ago, and having that goal in place has helped ready us to bring services such as advising, tutoring, and student activities into an online environment that still feels like a student is engaged at Washdaw Community College. Even prior to COVID-19, we knew that we were an outstanding provider of online education, and I'm convinced that even more so now, when it's more important than ever to provide excellent, student-focused, online programs and services. That's what we do, and we do it exceptionally well. We are ranked among the top 50 best online community colleges in the country by AC Online, the top 10 colleges in Michigan by Best Value Schools, and the eighth best for online certificate programs in the country by Intelligent.com, and the number one best community college in Michigan by Schools.com. At a recent virtual coffee with students that I had, one student said to me, and to the whole group, "The teacher made me feel like I was in the classroom, not online. That's how good WCC is." And I'd like to thank Vice President Hearns, I'd like to thank Executive Vice President Linda Blakey, Pete Basili and his staff, because, and even before Pete Basili and his staff, because there's so much great, you know, great groundwork that has been laid, and with anything, we just work to perfect it, but they have worked so hard, and most of all, our faculty. This has not been an easy time for our faculty. They have had to work very hard at becoming more proficient in online education, and you know what? They have done so with a great, with a lot of dedication. So I'm very proud that we are excellent providers of online education, and we are never going to rest on our laurels. I just want you to know that. So I said that today, I don't know what time it is, but we're excellent today as of this time. I realize that it's as of this time. I want to be able to say that to you, you know, six months from now as well. So we will always work to continuously improve, and I know that because of the people I work with and the faculty and staff, so thank you, trustees, and thank you for your support, I mean, from the beginning, to support this when online was questionable. Today, people are still questioning online, but you, many of you had to take this stance years ago, and so I thank you for the support that you continue to give us. And lastly, you might recall, at the last meeting, Associate Vice President Brandon Tucker provided us with an update on all the great things the Police Academy is doing. I'd like to share with you a video that I received from Joyce Van Meter, who's the Senior Director of Public Safety and Service Training. They requested that I share this video with you. Before I play this video, I'd like to thank Joyce for her team, and her team for all the work that they do, and Patrick Downey and his team for making sure cadets are safe with training, while training in the Police Academy, and also to our maintenance team, to Bill Johnson for making sure that, you know, we were COVID-prepared and ready. So with that, could you please play the video for the Board members?
Hi there, Board, President, members of the college leadership. We just wanted to take a moment, as members of Workforce and Community Development, staff members here, we just want to say thank you for letting us operate the Police Academy. This is a huge undertaking, we appreciate all the support that the different parts of the college have lent in and given us, and from all of us here, we know that this matters to these kids. They have a few messages for you. Hi, it's Joyce Van Meter, the Senior Director of Public Service Training, back again, and these recruits have a few things they'd like to tell you about what this training opportunity means to them.
To help those in their time of need.
Dalton Turmel gives me the opportunity to protect and serve the people of my community.
SPO Renshaw means I get to provide for my family.
Madison G., and we really appreciate you letting us do this, especially with everything going on in the world, so we can serve and protect.
SPO Russo, the academy helps me improve as a human being and do something I'm passionate
SPO Tripp, this academy will help me get my life started and get back to the community as soon as I can.
Cadet Bornheimer, this opportunity allows me to make my community a better place.
SPO Powell, and this gives me an opportunity to start my future when many are stuck inside, so thank you.
SPO Blackwell, this opportunity gives me the world, it means a lot to me, and I thank you for your sacrifices and everyone here making a difference.
Student Police Officer Clary, I really appreciate the opportunity because I'm one step closer to my dream.
SPO Cassar, I want to thank you for all the hard work you guys put in every single day. This opportunity means everything to me, giving me a chance to start a career that can really make a difference. Thank you.
SPO Charles Shanklin, it's great that the school's putting on the academy during the pandemic, it's allowed me to follow my dreams and become a police officer.
SPO Anthony Gomez, this training means to me and how I can help my community and further make people's lives better for them.
SPO Dylan Tanis, this opportunity means that I can serve my community.
SPO Victor French, I appreciate what you're doing here.
SPO Daniel Zeal, thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to better help the community.
SPO Devin Hunt, thank you for the opportunity to serve my community and represent Washdaw Community College.
SPO Brian Ray, and I appreciate this opportunity to be a greater hand in my community.
SPO Spencer Hilton, I appreciate this opportunity to move forward and serve in the community.
SPO David McCurdy, I appreciate this opportunity to make a difference in my community.
SPO Carlton Krosky, thank you for allowing me to complete a lifelong dream.
SPO 30 Mason Shilbridge, I appreciate you helping me be here, and I just want to give back to the community and make a difference.
SPO 10 Thomas DePonyo, thank you for the opportunity to be a good influence for our future generations.
SPO Bone, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give back.
SPO Zachary Cunningham, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to better my community, especially during a time like this.
SPO Jennifer Baldwin, thank you for this opportunity to help bridge the connections between our communities and police.
SPO Farmer, thank you for the chance of passing the torch and bringing hope and prosperity to law enforcement.
SPO Johnson, thank you for the opportunity to take care of my son and also bridge that gap between minority and police.
SPO Fay, thank you for the opportunity to get a job in the uncertain times of COVID-19 and be part of the next big change.
SPO Jackson, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to make my wife and kids
SPO Schwab, thank you for the opportunity to pursue what I want when I want it.
SPO Abdullah, it's a big honor that the whole campus is closed, and you guys put all this trust for us, and Morris Lawrence, the only building open, so this whole program means a lot to me. Thank you.
SPO Weston, thank you for this opportunity to learn and advance myself and become a law enforcement officer.
SPO Straits, thank you for this opportunity to pursue the career of my dreams.
SPO Williams, thank you for letting me pursue my career of my choice and also for letting me take part on this campus in these daring and troublesome times. Thank you.
SPO Cooper, thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve my community.
Once again, thank you!
Hi there, Board, President.
That was amazing, and I'd like to thank the students for choosing this as an occupation and for deciding that they want to come and train at this time, because, you know, they have to also be willing to work with the masks, and you wouldn't believe the equipment they have to wear and the things that they have to do because of the safety protocol. And I thank them for their commitment, and I appreciate instructors of the program as well as as well as the leadership, Joyce Van Meter, her staff, and Brandon Tucker. And that concludes my comments. I don't know, Chair Fleming, if you'd like to say anything after that video or?
That was a wonderful take on the students. You know, we don't get an opportunity to see the academy a lot, and so I appreciate them sending the video. That was really nice to see them and meet them. For me personally, I would say that having a good, strong Police Academy where we can instill our community values is very important, given all the things happening in our society right now. I'm very proud of our Police Academy, and I thank them for volunteering, for stepping up and coming into our training. Kudos to them. Would other board members like to say anything about the Police Academy? I see Bill's hand up. Go ahead, Bill.
I thought that was a very impressive video. I'm proud of the caliber of the men and the women that were suited up and on their way through the program. Very impressive. I even, I was trying to figure out which ones I'd like to meet in a traffic stop.
All of them.
No, I don't want to meet any in a traffic stop.
Ruth, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just commenting that I was glad to see a few minorities and women in the bunch.
Yes, that's always appreciated too. I wish we could do better, but I understand the challenges with them too. We always try to recruit. But, yeah.
Yeah, this is Diana, and I was going to say the same thing that Ruth said because it was going through my mind, but I tell you, in these times, it's challenging for minorities or people of color because of what's going on right now and has been for quite a few years. So if we get what we can get, I think that's a tremendous, that's really great for us in our community to get what we can get.
Thank you. Do other board members want to make a comment at this time?
It would be interesting if we do this kind of a video again to ask them to identify their hometowns, the communities that they come from.
All over, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. President Blanca, does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, going on to Tab D, Old Business. Tab D, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Siemens in the amount not to exceed 199.691 to replace the existing Gundermeyer and HVAC control systems. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Support.
I hear a second. Any discussion on Tab D? The HVAC upgrade? Any questions or anything? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton? McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Tab E, the MLB Retention Pond Restoration Contract. VP Johnson, do you want to add to this for us?
Thank you, Chair Fleming. Well, our beloved ML Pond is filling up with sediment. The impact of that is some of the drainage pipes that take water off of our buildings and our parking lots are now not working quite as effectively and causing some flooding issues. And so it is time to dredge the bottom of the pond. There's about five feet of sediment that's built up over 30-plus years. And we'd love to get to get after that work as soon as we can.
Hey, are you okay with the timeline? Or would you appreciate us bumping this up to an action?
That would be very much appreciated from the standpoint of, one, is the campus is quiet, and two, if we wait till fall, we can still get the work done, but a little bit more invasive on the ground because we're in the wet season. And so bringing the heavy equipment in does a little bit more damage to the ground.
Yeah, just to the board members, I would remind you that we don't meet in August, and this would, you know, this makes them wait a couple of cycles for us. I see Ruth's, okay, I see Ruth's hand first. So go ahead, Ruth, and then Dave.
I just wondered where you're going to put the sediment.
We are, we're actually working with the local authorities now. It'll be on campus and it'll be approved through the township for that. We're looking at a couple of different sites.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to consider this as an action item at this meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, that's been first and seconded. Any discussion on making this an action item? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton? McKnight Morton, yes.
Okay, thank you. We've now made this an action item. Is there any further discussion or questions on this retention pond?
It's me. Could you explain to me, because I'm not familiar with what dredging and sediment and other organics mean? Could you explain that to me, VP Johnson?
Yes, thank you. So over the years, the vegetation on the pond, you know, will die in the fall and fall to the bottom of the pond along with leaves and other natural sediment. And so that's built up on the bottom of the pond over the years. And so the process is that we bring in the equipment that can scoop out, that for lack of a better phrase, to scoop out that sediment. And then we haul that off, and we will disperse this across the approved sites on campus that will not be in areas that we're going to be using anytime soon. So, and it'll all be approved through the local authorities.
Okay, now, my other question is, does it have any algae in it?
Yes, it will have vegetation, you know, within it, yep.
And that will be all taken care of, that's what you're saying?
It will, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Bill, this involves runoff off of the parking lots, I am assuming. So I'm, Mike, I have some curiosity about any residue of toxic, like gasoline or oils that have tripped on the parking lots that have been washed off into this, and if there's any testing or anything required that we do with that.
There is. That's a really good question, Trustee Devardie. That is part of the process, is to take those samplings. And that all has to be approved by the local authorities.
Okay, thank you. Any other board questions on the retention pond? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the proposal.
I move we approve.
And so I guess I have a second then from Dave, right?
I defer to Diana and just support.
Okay. All right, thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton? McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Last adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devardie?
Devardie, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton? McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.